Welcome, everyone. Ms. Queen, please. I want to welcome everyone to the January 21st, 2000 fiscal year annual operating budget hearing of the Board of Education. I would like to ask everyone to turn off your wireless communication devices as they interfere with the microphones in the taping of our meeting. For this part of the evening, Ms. Berkeley, would you please call the roll?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Ms. Emmett?
Here.
Ms. Boozer Strather?
Here.
Mr. Burrows? Mr. Montero?
Here.
Mr. Murray?
Here.
Mr. Omolola? Ms. Queen? Mrs. Shepherd? Mr. Swan? Mr. Thomas? Mr. Valentine?
Here.
Mr. Wallace?
Present.
Mrs. Williams? Mr. Omolola?
Present.
Uh-huh. Mr. Burrows?
Here.
Mrs. Shepherd? Mr. Swan?
Present.
Mr. Thomas? Dr. Thornton?
Present. Thank you, Ms. Berkeley. The Board of Education is convened this evening for the sole purpose of receiving public commentary on the fiscal year 2021 budget. The Board is scheduled to adopt this fiscal 21 budget at its February 20th Board meeting, which will begin at 7:00 PM. The Board of Education's recommended budget will then be forwarded to our current executive, Ms. Angela Osterbrooks, who will develop her prepared budget and present it to the County Council in March of 2020. The County Council must adopt a budget which includes school system funding designated by category, and then it goes to the state legislature in April of 2020. The Board of Education will then reconcile the county's budget, and it will be then adopted at a regularly scheduled meeting in June of 2020. Colleagues, we will now hear from members of our community who have signed up to speak before us. Those members who would like to leave written testimony for the Board, there is a container in the front of the stage here, so if you'll leave a copy of your written comments for the Board members. Our registered speakers will be called in the order in which they signed up. I would ask you to please limit yourself to the three minutes that have been allotted for you, and I would now ask Mr. Alvi Escobar to please come forward.
Hello, good evening. Is this on? I don't think it's on. Hello, hello. Okay, there you go. Hello, good evening. My name is Alvi, and I've spoken in front of the Board before, but I always like to introduce myself as a proud product of the Prince George's County Public School System. I attended Lewisdale, Nicholas Orum, Northwestern, Prince George's Community College, and the University of Maryland, and now I'm exploring whether I would like to seek a master's in economics and whether to someday pursue a PhD in American Studies. I would like to begin by thanking the school system for its leadership on important funding issues such as Kerwin and the Bill to Learn Act. Its demonstrated commitment through implementation of requests from the communities such as an increase in mental health supports, and more specifically for the adoption of Board Policy 0101 on educational equity. As you know, the Board policy states that it is the intent of the Board of Education to acknowledge the disparity of opportunities for both the students and communities the system serves. As someone who has gone through the school system, I believe that this framework is an absolutely critical one to have as decisions are being made. Last year, the communities of Landy Park, Adelphi, Lewisdale, and surrounding neighborhoods came out to the budget hearings. There were at least 75 community members filling up these seats, demonstrating solidarity and their desire for success of their children. Community members shared their experiences of mistreatment, indifference, insensitivity, and lack of support from the school system. To contextualize their stories with data, in 2017, the Urban Institute released a report titled "Racial Inequities in Prince George's County." The report essentially says that residents in this part of the county, especially residents of color, often are below county averages and struggle to graduate high school, enroll in college, find good jobs, and build up assets. Anyone who lives here can tell you that that's not news. Unfortunately, graduating from a four-year university and progressing to prosperous socioeconomic places are uncommon. In fact, the norm is socioeconomic stagnation or regression. I understand these realities are the convergences of multiple systems, of multiple failings of multiple systems. However, I think the school system plays a critical role in being able to alleviate some of these realities, because, one, most of our students spend a lot of their time here, and, two, the school system builds up people, people who could one day come back and make the system better. With that being said, some of the things that I think can help build up this community include, as listed, as listed. So first, it pertains to curriculum. Number one being, a large part of the student population is in the northern area or Latinx, particularly with histories in Central America. As such, learning their histories would serve to empower and engage them. These histories could be added, of course. The history classes, or, you know, books, or other type of media could be added to make sure that kids are learning their histories. Number two, a more institutional, my time is up, but I only have five more items, if that's okay for me to proceed. So number two, a more constituent-
What did you say you have, sir?
Just like four, four to five more items, and they're just listed.
Did you say items?
Items, yeah.
Lines, please. Okay, okay.
Bullet points, that's what I had here.
Well, the bullet points, right?
Yes. So, number two, students should be able to keep their Spanish, and I think that there should be a more institutional way to allow that to happen. Number three, overcrowding should be resolved. As we all know, this is detrimental to the learning of students. And as it pertains to supports, number one, language resources, I think-
Please, you have to proceed, sir. You have to proceed.
Yes, yes. Language resources. I think our interpreters are amazing, and they need more professional development opportunities, and I think there's room for that. And the last thing being cultural competency. Immigration shapes our community, and so I think our school system needs to be sensitive to that on a daily basis.
Thank you, Mr. Escobar. Thank you for speaking. Our next speaker is Cheryl Swinson. I mean, Swinson is, I don't see Ms. Swinson, so I'll move to Joseph Jakuta.
Yes, Mr. Chair? Just to reject when he speaks, because we can't hear him.
Yes, Jakuta, sure. Please proceed, sir.
Good evening. My name is Joseph Jakuta. I am a father of a Robert Goddard Montessori school child. I'm very proud of that, and I'm also volunteering with a group called Climate Parents. It's a Sierra Club campaign, and I wanted to also say that I thank you, thank the Board for giving me the opportunity to speak for a few moments on the fiscal 2021 year budget. I'm in Mount Rainier, Maryland, by the way. I wanted to talk to you about 100% clean energy schools. This is an important step that I hope the Board can consider taking over the next couple of years. The, there's a need for clean energy in our schools, primarily for cost savings. The reduced fuel use and reduced electricity use can save our schools money in operations costs, and by switching to cleaner technology, you can save money on maintenance costs as well, as money can then in turn be sent back around to educational opportunities such as those being proposed in Kerwin. Also, by switching to clean energy schools, since buildings are of large emitter of carbon emissions, we can give our children the support they deserve. Finally, by switching to clean energy schools, we can provide our high school students with opportunities to learn the new technologies in the vocational setting to allow them to succeed in the future. Clean energy schools involve sort of three basic pillars, either clean, one-site generation from solar, switching to solar, the purchasing of renewable power on the grid, switching to electric-efficient heat pumps for heating and cooling conditions, and then finally retrofitting or installing efficient insulation, efficient windows, better lighting. I did submit written comments to provide some more of these details that I'm going to gloss over, but there's also, I wanted to make sure you're aware, there are financial tools available, because some of these opportunities do come with an upfront cost, but there are things such as power purchasing agreements, grants, and there, and other opportunities to save on the upfront capital cost. The time is now. I, I think this is a very important step for Prince George's County to take. I'm, I hope you consider looking at cleaner options for buildings and maintenance in the upcoming budget, considering adopting a resolution over time to call for 100% clean energy schools, and finally institute a work group of experts to look into how to implement such a plan. I want to thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir, for your testimony. Our next speaker is Michelle Clark. And I don't see Ms. Clark, so I'll go to the next speaker is Brooke Kidd. If you'll come forward, please.
Hello, good evening.
Good evening.
Hi. My name is Brooke Kidd. I'm the Executive Director of Joe's Movement Emporium and the soon-to-open Creative Suitland Arts Center.
Can you turn it on?
It's on. Testing.
Hey.
Great. Thank you so much. Brooke Kidd, with Joe's Movement Emporium and the soon-to-open Creative Suitland Arts Center. And we are a nonprofit arts organization that has served our school partners for more than 20 years. And I want to talk to you about after-school programs, community schools, and field trips. So our organization serves nearly 1,000 of Prince George's County Public School students each year. We have 75 students from eight different elementary schools that come to our facility every school day for a four-hour after-school program that includes arts education and academic supports. We have five after-school dance clubs serving over 120 students. We've got two really extensive summer learning programs, onsite at Joe's, at Elizabeth Seaton Elementary High School, and soon to be at our Creative Suitland site. And then we have a really special creative works program, and that's a vocational technical job training program in digital media and theater technology. It's a year-round program, and it's such a special program that gets 95% of our students graduating, and most importantly, catches the students after their public school career and helps them to achieve long-term post-secondary success. But we also do academic support in free K and kindergarten arts education programs, and working with the CRI programs at three different high schools for a long-term arts education residency. We are ready to enhance our after-schoolism in this county. Our organization and many of our other nonprofit partners really want to take advantage of the community schools' funding, the possibilities of how the Kerwin Commission will improve how we do out-of-school programming, and we need to have the relationship with our schools to do that, and we look forward to what can advance in that, not only what we're charged to be in this space, because there should be something, but we can't afford $30 an hour. And there should be a way for us to be licensed through the Department of Education for a caregiver, which is an outdated term, and the regulations don't meet who we serve, and our work with the schools. And to have a fluid back and forth between our facilities during the school day and after-school, to really find the best way to give the academic support, the social-emotional learning, the parent engagement, and the civic involvement, and your nonprofit sector there wants so much to be that partner, and we're ready to do the work as things move along. The last comment I want to make is let's do what we can do to make field trips easier, to book and to schedule and make happen. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Kidd. The next speaker is Caterina Correa. I don't see Caterina, so I'll go next to Justin Christensen.
Caterina is sick tonight, so that's why she's not here. My name is Justine Christensen, and I'm the parent of two students in the award-winning Creative and Performing Arts Program at Hyattsville Middle School. One's in the Media Arts Program and the other in the Theater Program, and I cannot say enough good things about the staff and the opportunities that that allows for our students. I'm here tonight to request future funding to expand the CPA program at Hyattsville Middle to include sixth graders when the new school is finished. This will require additional staff, since the CPA staff currently teach the students in their particular disciplines, as well as elective classes which are available to all students. It will also require additional funding for materials and supplies. Overcrowding at the school has prevented the complete realignment of sixth grade to the middle school at some of our feeder schools like University Park and Mount Rainier. So in the interest of fairness, the CPA program at Hyattsville Middle is only available to seventh and eighth graders. There are also serious space restrictions in the current building that have capped the program at 200 students. This has created inequitable educational access for students in this part of the county. Students at Benjamin Floy and Thomas Pullen are able to audition and participate in the CPA programs at those schools, beginning in sixth grade, which gives them three years of education in their chosen discipline, whereas students at Hyattsville Middle only get two. This is particularly problematic for band and orchestra, because sixth graders coming in have to take beginning band and orchestra even though they've already taken years of that in elementary school. Finally, there needs to be a holistic look at the arts programming in this part of the county. Felige Elementary School was designated an arts integration school when it opened, but that school feeds to Nicholas Orum, which does not have a CPA program. Hyattsville Elementary is not an arts integration school, but is one of the biggest feeders to Hyattsville Middle. It's my understanding that Northwestern's VPA program at this school does not have the same boundaries as Hyattsville Middle School, and in fact, students at Hyattsville Middle were only recently allowed to audition and attend this school if they were not within the boundary. So this is the Gateway Arts District, and we need continuity and access to arts education for students this, in this area, and a look at the holistic, a holistic look at our current boundaries. And so in addition, we just want you to consider future funding and future budgets when our new middle school is open, that we will address these issues. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Christensen. The next speaker is Curry Rose Hosky. If you'll please come forward.
Dr. Golson, ladies and gentlemen of the Board and community members. My name is Curry Rose Hosky. I'm a Prince George's County homeowner and taxpayer, and I'm part of a two-educator family. My husband has been teaching at Fairmont Heights High School for 15 years. We are the parents of a Prince George's County fifth grader. I am also the library media specialist at Berwin Heights Elementary School. But ladies and gentlemen, I am not your mother's librarian. I am not Marian, Madam Librarian. I do not wear my hair in a bun and spend all day shushing students as the custodian of books. I'm a teacher. I'm a librarian. I'm an information specialist and a Google-certified educator. And forgive me if you've seen me sing at one of these hearings before, but it's been a while. Oh, yes, I read picture books and dance and sing with the kindergarteners, but I also collaborate with teachers to integrate their curricular topics with library skills. I teach our students how to go beyond a Google search, to access public library and PGCPS databases geared to their needs and reading level, and not to settle for the first result they see. I foster a love of reading, as well as empower students to critically evaluate and synthesize information. Like my fellow library media specialists, I'm uniquely and specially trained to foster these skills in our students. Most recently, I have been coordinating Berwin Heights' Write a Book program in our, in our county's Write a Book program, which is organized by the Office of Library Media Services. This competition, now in its 43rd year, encourages students to express themselves creatively through writing, illustration, and publication of their own books. It's a terrific program, and I urge you to seek out some of these amazing student-written works in your local schools. I am able to fill all of these roles, because I am now full-time at my school after years of being half-time and serving two schools per week. That means I can once again be fully present for all of my students and staff, and no longer have to say, "I'm sorry, I'll be at my other school tomorrow," and won't be able to help you until... The fact is, half-time is only half as good, and our students at those schools are missing 50% of their rightful access to literacy, critical thinking, and reading support. Without full-time certified staff in each library media center, our school system's ability to produce students who can use and evaluate information effectively is greatly reduced. And without these 21st-century skills, how can our students succeed in school and be college and career-ready? Please restore universal full-time library media specialist positions in your budget and give each school a full-time 1.0 librarian to ensure that all of our students have access to the skills that will help them achieve. Our students, our children, deserve no less, now more than ever. I'm Curry Rose Hosky. Thank you, and good night.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Mary Bowser, President of the Northwestern High School PTSA.
Thank you for giving this opportunity to talk to you tonight. Recently, I'd say last year, actually, we had a teacher brought to our attention that the computers in our school library were 10 years old. They didn't work well. They might turn on, but they didn't connect to the internet well. They did not connect to the printers well. And the librarian spent a great deal of time having to print assignments for the students. You understand, it's not a matter of these students leaving things to the last minute and not printing their homework at home. A lot of these kids don't have computers at home. They don't have printers at home. They can't afford to print at the public library. So they rely upon this hard-working media specialist at our school to print for her, for her to print for them. When the PTSA was learned of this and decided to pursue a grant for 10 new computers, the librarian was moved to tears. By getting these 10 computers, the students are able to print on their own. It saves her a great deal of time and a great deal of anxiety for the students, who often, being teenagers, leave things to bit to the last minute. That said, out of the 45 computers in the library, 10 are new, the rest are 10 years old. And granted, they do turn on and they do work to some extent, but our students deserve much better. The policy for Prince George's County, I believe, is that these computers are assessed and replaced every three years, but if funding is available. Apparently, for 10 years, funding wasn't available. I think it would be a wonderful thing to fully fund an inventory of the computers at especially a school at this size, and to replace what's necessary, and to fund a full-time IT professional. This school has 2,400 students, about 150 teachers, and a half-time IT support guy that we share with another high school. So if you could consider a full funding of this important resource, I'd be grateful, as well as to fully fund some outstanding repairs at this school, and I'm sure others have. Our principal has been trying for three years, for instance, to get some drywall put up in an office. The request has been denied for two years now. So that is everything I have to say tonight, and again, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Madam President, for your comments. Our next speaker is William Smith. Mr. Smith, please come forward.
Hi, good evening. It's the first time I've ever done anything like this. I feel nervous. My name is William Smith. I'm a Prince George's County resident, and I serve as the Director of School-Based Health for Mary Center. We are a federally qualified health, federally qualified community health center that serves the county, along with DC and Montgomery County as well. I'm here today to advocate for the expansion of school-based health services here in Prince George's County, and to encourage you to utilize the current commission funds to improve the health and wellness of our community through some sustainable measures. For those of you who are not familiar, a school-based health center is a small clinic, essentially within the school, staffed by a nurse practitioner and an administrative or medical assistant who help to enhance the health services and support the school nurse in their efforts to manage the health and well-being of the school's student staff, schools, student, and staff populations. Some centers also offer behavioral and dental health service providers as well. The National School-Based Health Alliance notes that the major contributions of school-based health centers include, but are certainly not limited to, decreasing chronic absenteeism, therefore increasing graduation rates, decreasing teen pregnancy rates, decreasing emergency room visits related to poorly controlled asthma and other chronic health conditions, increasing compliance with routine health maintenance, including vaccinations, which I know is a key word around here, and promoting a positive school climate in general. School-based health centers have been part of the fabric of Maryland healthcare system since 1985, and we are looking to expand the school-based health services offered here in Prince George's County. We believe strongly in the role of health and education as foundational for the success of the families that we serve. As a federally qualified healthcare centers, we are in a unique position to create long-term sustainable clinic services within the county through our higher reimbursement rates with federal and state Medicaid programs. We currently have one full-service clinic here in Prince George's County in Adelphi, Maryland, and we are dedicated to growing this, serve this larger part of the community. We see school-based health as the best way to grow in the community. We have proposed to Prince George's County Public Schools to establish a school-based health center at Cool Spring Elementary at the new Cherokee Lane site, opening in 2021. These two centers will offer medical and behavioral health services for students and staff, and we have proposed bringing behavioral health and reproductive health education services to students at High Point High. We are excited that we are on the way to opening our first school-based health centers in the county, and we know that there are other community health centers here in the area who are also interested in serving the more than 200 schools we have here. I will close in saying that we all know that healthy children make for healthier learners, and that we hope that you'll support the expansion of school-based health programming in Prince George's County in 2021. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Smith. The next speaker is Jesse Varick. I couldn't make out the spelling of your name. Am I pronouncing it correctly?
You're close.
Thank you, thank you.
I'm Jesse Varick.
Varick.
I got my master's of neuroscience before teaching, five years up down the road at Hyattsville Middle School. There, I led the after-school program, CHEMS, and I'm also a member of Maryland Transunity, which meets once a month up the road. And I'm here to speak to the needs for LGBTQ students to get support in the schools and for anti-bullying measurements, such as the Human Rights Campaign's Welcoming Schools program. I'm here to speak out because, well, what I've seen, frankly, there's need for deliberate training, education, and support programs to bring equity to our students. It's a vulnerable population, and with, they're often rejected from other support programs in their community. And staff are not always trained to be supportive when a student comes out to them or seeks them for support, so there's need for training in the school to actually get everybody on board to be ready to support these students and help with their needs. The initiative lets people know that there is a place that they can go. When these programs are created and supported, people know that there's a place they can go, they can be safe, and where they're going to be accepted is frequently rejected when you go to other places. Equity is only going to exist if we raise up people that are particularly vulnerable, particularly intersectional people, and people who are targets of bullying. I know that I saw that in my five years teaching here, and in my own experience, it's a very necessary measure to be taken. It's really all I have to say. Thank you very much for your time.
And thank you for your testimony. The next speaker is speaker is Crystal Ariado. No, I got that wrong. Oh, that's Crystal.
I forgive you.
Okay.
Good evening. My name is Crystal Ariella, and I'm here this evening on behalf of Prince George's County LGBTQ Dignity Project to request funding to support for a program called Welcoming Schools, run by HRC Foundation. This program is for elementary school educators and personnel to use professional development, lesson plans, activities, and books to ensure that schools embrace families that create LGBTQ, racial, and gender-inclusive schools, and prevent bias-based bullying. I want to offer my professional, my personal thanks and appreciation for the adoption of the educational equity policy by this Board, and I think it was affirming in creating diverse backgrounds. As the policy itself states, it is the belief of the Board of Education that closing the achievement gap is not just about instruction. It is the way we think about, understand, believe in the potential and capabilities of our students, as well as their families and communities, and how we effectively interact with them. So now we believe it's time to take those words into action. Welcoming Schools works with large and small school districts across the country, including seeing data-driven results in Boston Public Schools, where you look at 95,000 educators across 39 states have participated in welcoming schools, professional development, to create positive LGBTQ, racial, and gender-inclusive schools climates, where all families and students are welcomed and can thrive. Schools using welcoming schools approach have experienced 50% reduction in bullying behavior- behavior, 25% in reduction in behavior referrals, 20% at, in reduction in gender bias teasing and harassment. The implementation of this program could cost approximately $5,000 per school, so just $5,000 to bridge the gap of diversity. And so we're asking for a pilot program for three to five years for 10 schools, costing about $50,000 per year, to change the entire trajectory of a student's life, because we understand bullying leads to suicide. And if we could save just one child's life with this program, it would be well worth it. I recommend funding would make sense in line items in several areas, including office of equity, diversity, inclusion, the area of restorative justice, as professional development, or in the budget for community schools. Again, I want to thank the board for taking this courageous step you already took in the educational equity policy, and really ask you to take it a step further, because words have meaning, but actions change lives. And you have the opportunity to do that. I live by one quote, greatness is not the impact of yourself, but the impact you have on others, and I want to be great, I believe Prince George's County is great, and this is one way in which we can make it better. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. The next speaker is Cassie Morris, if you'll come forward, please.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Cassie Morris, and I'm the Director of the LGBTQ Dignity Project, and I'm here today to speak with support of the Welcoming School Initiative. We started the Dignity Project a little under a year ago, and since that, since that organization had started, we have received multiple emails, phone calls, just people stopping us to talk about how their children in schools are being bullied because of their sexual orientation and how they identify. And as, I didn't go to school in Prince George's, I'm not from here, I don't have a child in the school system, but I'm a member of the community. And to see a community that I live in as a lesbian woman, to know that if I have a child here in Prince George's County, I would not feel safe to send them to the school system here based on testimony that I've heard from parents and children. There was an article about a student here in Prince George's County that identified as a lesbian that was beaten, broken ribs, bruises, and it wasn't very public because that student was afraid of being bullied, so they were afraid to actually go out, both her and her parents. And so according to the rainbow families, in Prince George's County, students that identify as LGBTQ plus students are two times more likely to be bullied in school, on school property, two times likely to have been bullied by electronic, electronically, and three times as likely not to go to school because they know that if they go to school, they're going to be discriminated against, they're going to be bullied, and they don't feel like they have a safe haven in Prince George's Public School to go to when these things are happening. So I'm asking you, please support the Welcoming School Initiative. We have to do better in Prince George's County for children that are identified as LGBTQ plus. And that's all I have today, thank you, guys.
Thank you for your comments. The next and final speaker is Michelle Clark. Good evening.
I came today for a couple of reasons. The first one, the first two of them are things that Teresa Dudley asked me to mention, specifically restorative practices funding, to make sure that the circle trainings are funded and are occurring regularly in the coming year. We need to make sure that that program continues to expand. It should be able to work hand-in-hand with the community schools, because innovative discipline policies go with community schools, it's all, all-in-one. And then, of course, most importantly to PGCEA, is that we make sure that, that no matter what else happens, that the money's there to fund the negotiated agreements. And now that I'm done with her stuff, I'm going to go on to mine. As an early childhood special educator, I can tell you that we are extremely overcrowded at my ECC. We have been from the day we opened, and we continue to get new children on a regular basis. So special education funding is something that seriously needs to be looked at. Also, in the last several years, we got rid of the CSEP programs, which were a program where the kids in the kindergarten were outside of the regular classroom, but they could be included as, as they were able to be. Basically, the state said we had too many kids identified in special education excluded, but the problem is, the money didn't go to the classrooms where the kids went. So you have all sorts of children sitting in kindergarten classrooms with one teacher who've come from a place where they had four teachers in pre-K to meet their needs. And there are, instead of a maximum of 20 students, usually 25 to 30. So it's overwhelming for the children, it's also overwhelming for the teachers, it causes behavior issues, which then disrupts the learning for everybody. So as we move the children out of a special ed program, and I'm not saying they should be excluded, I do believe they should be included, we just need to make sure the resources, especially staff resources, follow the children. I know that the Special Education Committee has been working very hard on their program for next year. One of the things they are looking at is moving the co-taught classroom into the elementary level. I think that would be ideal and well worth every penny you spend to get it done. The children would have access to a special educator all day long, every day, and their needs could actually be met without driving the regular teacher crazy and the rest of the class. Thank you, have a good evening.
Thank you, Ms. Wallace. Let me thank again Ms. King and Ms. Berkeley for staffing this evening's hearing. I want to thank Mr. Wallace again, as Chair of our Budget, Operation, and Physical Affairs Committee, as well as the colleagues who serve on that committee, Mr. Valentine, Mr. Burrows, our Vice Chair, Ms. Queen, and Mr. Murray. I want to thank you all for the leadership that you're providing. This concludes our first budget hearing. I do want to recognize the presence, we're always pleased to have any federal, state, or locally elected official in the, with us, and I, someone told me that City Council Member McCarthy is here, are you in the audience? Thank you. Thank you for your strong support of the board and support of full funding of Kerwin's. Thank you, and that concludes our hearing. Thank you, colleagues.